Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 6, 2021, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, I'll open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Is anyone present here in person for public forum? No? Is anybody joining us online for public forum? No? Okay. So we'll get to announcements. I don't have anything for announcements tonight.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that attended Veterans Day in front of Town Hall. And I want to say thank you to Phil and the crew, DPW. The grounds looked really nice. It was a nice setting, so thank you very much.
I guess I want to change my mind. I do want to say one thing, and I want to thank Bob Flaherty and some members of the department for their help yesterday and today and potentially tomorrow, I guess, at the Hatfield Elementary School with the situation that's going on there. The chief, Ricky, Ricky's last name is?
Siliberto.
Siliberto. And Hannah Zahn, and of course Carrie Flaherty were there. And that's really, I appreciate that and want to make sure that they're recognized for those efforts. So thank you to Hannah, Ricky, chief, and Carrie.
I have nothing. No? Thank you.
Marlene?
I just want to mention that the town was notified. Community Preservations' state reimbursement is 100%. And final total distribution will be $179,395. So that's pretty good.
So that's the two combined, or that's what we get from the state and the town?
That's just from the state, correct? Yeah, that's the state.
So that's got to be a pretty robust fund at this point.
That's matching with the town collected.
Yeah. Should be looking at ways to take advantage of that growing fund. Okay, excellent. Anything else? So we'll get to the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 2 and the minutes of November 10.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Karen, thank you. Karen does a great job.
Yes.
So we'll get into our posted business. First, we have, topic one is Housing Authority Executive Director Brenna Duquette is joining us. She's joining us virtually tonight. Hi Brenna. And there's two items, tree planting and crosswalk.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay. Thank you.
Good job, John.
We cannot get through a single meeting without some type of technical problem, but that's okay.
It's the nature of the beast with technology. So, good evening, selectmen. I wanted to bring to light the new crosswalks that were put in with the repaving of our parking lot. Some of my residents have brought it to the attention of my board, so we're helping with the town. We're hoping that the towns help we can get the matter resolved. A lot of residents are expressing that people aren't stopping when the lights are flashing. And, you know, they're not able to, most of them. So it's really a dangerous situation if someone's just going right through when they're trying to cross. I know that they have gone to the police department as well, but I just wanted to bring it to the town's attention, too.
Yeah, this is something new, so obviously, some residents may not be aware that it's there. It may sneak up on them, but this is really important, that townspeople know that this is a new feature there for the safety of the residents at Kapewalk and everybody who walks downtown. A lot of kids after school walk around in that area. People take walks all day long, so it's something that, you know, people really need to watch out for and be aware of. So we do have some correspondence here from Chief Dukosjak about his ability to enforce this. And I'm wondering, I'm assuming you've spoken with Chief Dukosjak, but, I mean, can they do some detail, not details there, but, you know, sitting there watching and, you know, until residents really get used to this and maybe reminding residents, you know, if they see that they're not stopping, that's new and we need to make sure we're careful there?
Yeah, it's my understanding that they have, you know, sat there and watched, but, you know, obviously, they can't sit there 24/7 to make sure everybody is safely crossing. So I think that, you know, just putting it on all the town residents' radar will really help because, like you said, it is something new. So if it's never been there before, it might sneak up on somebody.
So, that's okay. May I?
Of course.
So this is something that I find very, very frustrating because whether it's new or not, everybody should be able to see a flashing light. And I mean, in Main Street, I mean, I cross it almost daily now in front of the condos coming towards Town Hall, and it's, there is no light, but I'm in a crosswalk and nobody is stopping or even slowing down for the vast majority. And so it's not only the folks at Kapewalk that Brenna represents, but it's the town in general. People need to slow down and start obeying traffic laws. I find it really ridiculous, quite frankly. I mean, there's no excuse for it, none whatsoever, and we don't have enough police officers to man all the crosswalks in town. People just need to slow down going through the center of town where they're going straight on Main Street, turning up school onto Chestnut. And just keep in mind, as Diana mentioned, about the children after school, as Brenna's referring to, the folks at Kapewalk. And then there's, you know, the people in the middle like me that are just, you know, going for walks. But it really is dangerous because as a pedestrian, you don't want to assume that they're going to stop, right? So you do, and you wait to see if somebody slows down and waves you across. But, I mean, this would never fly in Northampton, right? I mean, so I guess I'm just asking residents, you know, to just slow down. I mean, what's the rush, man?
We could also, let's get something up on the town's Facebook page and, you know, and maybe see if Siobhan could share it on Only in Hatfield and that sort of thing because that's another really great way to make people aware of things. You know, depending on where you live, you may not go to that area very often. You know, I go through there all the time, but, you know, if you live in other parts of town and you take Chestnut Street out, you may not.
Well, and we've tried, right? The DPW has put, and the police have put those, the barrels, the yellow barrels with the flashing light. You know, we've tried and they, like, to no avail. I mean, I don't know what else we can do, quite honestly. And, you know, the chief was nice enough. If somebody wants to look up the law, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 11. A motorist must yield slow or stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk. I mean, I don't know, that's basic when you go get your learner's permit. That's on there.
I do remember a time years ago when Officer Weeks was on, he stood in the middle of the crosswalk at the high school, and he did a courtesy handout of information. So people had to actually stop there, and he handed them a courtesy information. I don't know if something like that might be effective, making the car actually stop, handing them, you know, "Hi, how are you?", just a reminder, "This is a crosswalk. You got to stop." I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it did work somewhat years ago.
What about a signboard that, as you approach that intersection, I don't know, do we have a signboard? We don't have a signboard.
Sandwich boards?
Well, no, the ones like that flash messages. We don't have one.
The electronic, no, we don't, not that I'm aware of.
Well, I mean, it is a flashing.
We were talking about buying one once.
He got a call. Yeah, he got a call.
Oh.
Phil's coming up to the mic here.
And the other thing is a speed bump, as they point out, to slow traffic down.
So I met with Chief Dukosjak today with regards to this, and, you know, he's correct. People have to slow down as well as pedestrians paying attention. As far as a new crosswalk, that crosswalk was just relocated. There's always been a crosswalk across the street there. It's just relocated, and it's the best-marked crosswalk in town with the flashing lights. So I don't know if the flashing lights are doing something different to people driving because there's always been a crosswalk there.
True, that's true. That's a good point. It is, it's a new setup.
It's a new setup, and it's a new location for the crosswalk. But, you know, again, you know, if people pay attention a little bit better down there, I think that.
Well, you know, to your point, there's a lot going on in that intersection, right? You have, there's always people around, there's people pulling in and out of the store across the street. Fish Tales is right there. I mean, people should be slowing down long before they get to that crosswalk, so.
Chief Dukosjak is right in his, you know, in his email where he said, within a 200-foot radius of Town Hall, there's six crosswalks. So it's a little much. You know what I mean? It's a little much.
Well, so people should slow down. So let's get a message up on social media.
Thanks, Phil.
Sorry, that's my... Okay. Brenna?
Thank you.
Great. Is that all you had for us tonight?
I wanted to bring up the tree that was planted. There was some correspondence. I know Ed was specifically CC'd on it. I don't know if it was related to the other selectmen. The DPW had planted the shade tree that was promised to the residents in replacement of the one that we removed during the project. That was, you know, a really big source of distress for the residents. And no fault of the DPW, someone who is no longer affiliated with the Housing Authority directed them as to, you know, where to plant it, just went ahead and gave the DPW the okay when our residents had met and picked a specific type of tree that they wanted and they were really looking forward to picking where to plant it. So I just wanted to clear the air on that, that that wasn't on the DPW, but they were taking direction from someone who isn't on the board anymore, isn't affiliated with the Housing Authority. So that's kind of where my chair wilks, where that email came from of his frustration. The tree has since been taken away, so hopefully, I will be able to contact DPW and get it all sorted out. But I just wanted to clear the air on that.
So the new tree has been removed, and there'll be another new tree?
Yes, and hopefully, the ones that the residents want this time.
In the spring, I assume?
I assume in the spring at this point as well, yes.
So the issue has been resolved?
The issue has been resolved.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that, Brenna, because, you know, we, you know, things, comments and things fly through town, and so it's nice to have a coordinated effort going forward.
This is the first I'm hearing about the tree.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, I saw some, but I didn't hear anything about the tree. But I know that this was an important matter for the residents there, like you say.
Yeah.
And we want to make sure.
And, you know, they grouped together, they picked the trees, so when one was just kind of planted, everyone was very concerned and confused, as was I. So we figured it out.
Okay. And you've assured them that this...
Yes.
Okay, great. Very good.
Awesome.
Brenna, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brenna.
For everything. So moving right along here, we are scheduled to have a COVID update from Claudia. Claudia is joining us online.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Hi, Claudia.
Okay, great. All right, well, I think as everyone knows by now, it's been about 10s past four or five days with COVID activity. We have had, last week, we saw five new cases of COVID, whereas the week previous, we had only one.
But there's more to the story than that, Claudia, right?
Yes, yes, there is. I mean, clearly, I think it's no surprise to, it would come as no surprise to anyone right now that's heard all about this, it's been in the papers, that, you know, this, you know, has largely to do with an outbreak of COVID at the elementary school. You know, I, you know, these past five cases were tied to the elementary school, but that's about as much information as I'm comfortable giving on that.
So the additional cases that people are reading about in the paper and seeing on the news are related to the school, but they're not town residents, so therefore, we're limited in what we can report on those cases because they're not technically our cases, right?
Correct. And just so that I can remind everyone again, anyone who might be listening to this, is that in my capacity as the COVID coordinator and using the state surveillance system, I only have authorization to see cases that reside in Hatfield. If they reside out of town, I am not authorized to look at any other town.
Right.
I wouldn't even be able to look at it if I tried.
But just like you do, so if there's a Hatfield case, you do contact tracing, and that would include notifying contacts from other communities, Hatfield residents can assume that people who are testing positive who reside in other communities, if they're a contact, they will be notified as well through the other community.
That's correct.
Yep.
Well, how did the newspaper know that we had all these cases? If you only can see our cases, I'm just, I'm sort of confused by this, that's all. I mean, I understand that we're only reporting the cases that are residents in town, but then the newspaper reported the, these other cases of people that lived out of town. So if you're saying you only can see Hatfield, how do they?
Somebody from the school or somebody on social media might have posted something, and that's how the news media picked up on it.
No, if it has to do with, if it has to do with the school, which this all centers around right now, the school uses its own sort of tracking form internally to see where those, to see where these people actually live. So that's information that the school would have, but not necessarily share with me that they have. You know, hypothetically, they have a staff member that tested positive but doesn't live in town. They may live, you know, just off top, they might live in Hadley. I would never know about that because they are not a Hatfield resident. They only work at Hatfield.
Right. So I guess I was just trying to address Ed's question. So, Ed, it wouldn't come from Claudia or anything she sent out. That particular issue or, you know, for the schools right now, just came from another source. It wasn't an official Town of Hatfield sort of release, you know what I mean? That's what Claudia does at the end of each week.
At the same time, what I think is really important is that as we're, and I've said this at a couple of different meetings and in a couple of different ways, but as we're reporting on this on a regular basis, we have to find a way to give people the information that is appropriate so that townspeople have a real understanding of what's happening with COVID in our community. So even though those aren't cases that are really attributed to our community, it's important that people know about this. And, you know, I think we talked maybe at the last meeting about the information, you know, when our previous COVID coordinator would give information, she might say, there's five cases, it's from three households, you know, and it was, I think that what people want is information, and I think it's important that they get that in a way that's appropriate. I mean, I understand you can't report on those, but we can let townspeople know what's going on, and it's important we do that.
We certainly do that if it does come to my attention. Just to, you know, kind of, you know, make a point with that, I mean, there are different industries in town. I'm certain that there have been cases of COVID that have been popping up in those places, but because those are not town residents, I never hear about them, and they would never be reported to me.
Like if they were an employee of someone in, yeah.
Yeah, if they, you know, came into work, they tested positive, got sent home, live in Northampton, I'd never hear about it. I wouldn't know anything about it.
Right.
The only reason I know anything about these is because of Jane, the school nurse, and I have been collaborating a little bit on this because of what's been going on over there. So she's shared some information with me. But, you know, again, the accurate case count for Hatfield is for the Hatfield residents, and there are five.
Gotcha.
You know, the rest of that is just, I'm afraid to say that, you know, we have, you know, 17 people, you know, in the town that have tested positive when those people don't live in the town. It seems to artificially inflate the numbers, if you understand what I mean.
I understand.
What we did do with your, with the, with yesterday's information was, we did post it, the code red call that went out last night, and the, which it does every Monday, and the weekly email, we did, in fact, post that five cases were Hatfield residents and that there were a total of 19 at the elementary school, which included those five Hatfield residents because we are trying to share as much information as we can, hopefully as clearly as we can as well. But since there had, it had happened so quickly, it was in the newspaper, and again, we had a meeting about it yesterday afternoon, as you know, Claudia, the COVID committee and school department, et cetera. You know, we felt it was important to get all that information out for those people that don't have children in the school, that if they see something about 19 cases or however many cases there are, they understand what the circumstances are, at least the best that we can report to them.
Right. Ed, you were about to say?
I think it's important that we're able to give the town information if there's an outbreak. And in one way, it sort of bugs me that if we have a business that, say, has 50 employees that drive to Hatfield, and all of a sudden, they all get something, and we can't say that there's an outbreak over here, that sort of tells the town, you know, it doesn't protect the town. So I guess we're looking at, how do we best protect the town in case there is like a little outbreak so that it can be controlled? I'm sure that, I guess, maybe it doesn't fall on the COVID coordinator. Maybe that's more of a board of health thing to let us know that, a heads up that there's a little spike here or a spike there, so, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, because in the beginning of all of this, when we would have information about that, and I don't know if it was because during the contact tracing portion of, so if someone worked at a town business, lived somewhere else, and tested positive, I do think we had that information. And I don't know if it was because the COVID coordinator from that community was corresponding with our previous COVID coordinator, but we seemed to, we used to have a better picture of what was going on, which then allowed us to better communicate with townspeople.
Yeah, we sort of lost that.
What was going on.
I don't know what happened.
Right.
Yes, overall, and earlier on in the pandemic, we did have some businesses that were self-reporting, but that doesn't seem to be the case anymore. Ever since we've gone out of a state of emergency in Massachusetts, a lot of those things are just not being shared anymore.
Okay. Okay, well, for the purposes of tonight's COVID update, I mean, I, you know, thank you for being here, and, but I do think it's, you know, we keep saying, hopefully, we won't have to deal with this again, but, you know, I'd like to make sure that we're giving townspeople the best information in the timeliest manner possible. Yeah. Thank you, Claudia, very much.
Okay, good night.
Thanks, Claudia. Good night.
So we have, I have a couple of, I have like two minutes before we have to open a hearing. There's probably nothing we can take up that quickly. You want to do one of the water abatements? So we have some, I'm just gonna, I've got to fast-forward here through all of this. We have a couple of water abatements. We'll do one or two of them quickly here while we kill a couple of minutes. So the first one is for Maureen and Gregory Weeks from Plantation Road. Bill?
Yes. We really don't know what happened to the meters, but something happened with the reading, so I'm thinking that it was something electronic between the reader, the meter and the gun. So the bill was out of whack, and the Weeks has put in an abatement for 75 or whatever it is, 75 and 75 off the bill.
Okay.
And we also have the past bills to see that it was totally out of whack.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to abate 19 Plantation Road for totals $150, 75 for sewer, 75 for water.
I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And 102 Main Street, looks like there was a pool installed.
Pool, yeah.
So we're...
So we're abating the sewer side of it. They paid for the water to fill the pool, and they just, the sewer side.
Yep, and of course, it's just partial sewer, the amount of gallons that equals the amount of water used, which is very common practice. So I'll make a motion to abate $91.18 for 102 Main Street.
Second.
Do I have that one? Oh, I do. A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are right at 6:00 PM, and we have posted for 6:00 PM our tax classification hearing. However, so we're going to go ahead and open that hearing. However, there was a little discrepancy in the timing between what was advertised in the newspaper and what was posted on our public agenda. So the agenda said 6:15. So what we'd like to do is open the meeting and then wait until 6:15 because we just want to make sure that there isn't someone who shows up at 6:15. We don't want to have someone show up and the hearing's already over. So we are going to open that, but then just wait 15 minutes to actually take action on So maybe there's some other...
And the fire chief got called out to a call. Those are the next couple of discussions.
Yeah, the fire chief was supposed to be here. Phil, do you want to take up the change order?
Change order, yeah.
On Route 5?
On Route 5.
Our fuel tank, whichever one.
The fuel tanks or the...
Or the, or Marley.
We have 15 minutes here, Phil, that we want to move ahead on the agenda a little bit. We can probably do them both. So we'll take up the fuel tanks.
So you do have a copy of the contract. The project was awarded to Sovereign Builders, Inc. at the previous meeting, and you have the contract document in front of you.
So this is just to sign it? We've already voted it?
This is just to sign it. You did vote it. So this is just to approve the contract. There's a number of documents that will be part of the contract, and on the very first page of the contract, you'll see that the specifications will be attached. Sovereign Builders bid will be attached, as well as a certificate of noncollusion, certificate of tax compliance, certificate of authorization, certificate of insurance, labor harmony, and OSHA training certification. And we received all those certificates when they submitted their bid.
So everything is in order?
Yes, it is.
And we don't need to vote, we just need to sign?
We have the bonds. Correct.
Okay.
So just a little update. I was, I had a meeting with Sovereign Builders about the tanks, and...
You need to sign both of those.
He filed all the submittals for all the equipment, so we passed that information along to the fire chief to make sure that everything is on the up and up as far as the tank and the devices that really is under his jurisdiction. So he's reviewing them now. He's, so far, his brief discussion with me just a couple of minutes ago was that he sees no problem with their submittals. So as soon as we accept their submittals, they're going to order the tank, which is now 20 weeks out.
From 16 to 20. Oh, my goodness.
I noticed it said February completion date by February 2022, right?
Could be.
It could be. Depends on...
Could be. Yeah, so, I mean, it is what it is.
Well, 20 weeks is...
You're into April.
Yeah. I mean, so it's not going to happen by February.
Yeah, you're into April.
Really takes that long for the...
Yeah, we don't know, but I mean, that was his last update the other day when we had a meeting, so.
Okay. Change order?
I just have...
That's change order number three.
I mean, the change order here, originally, we talked about the water line, so we all agreed with the water line, but on this change order, can you, I just, I just wondering about the additional manhole that they needed and the water. I know that there was a... I know that there was a water break, so can you just talk about those two items on this change order?
The additional manhole is, the manhole, let me think about this. The additional manhole is a manhole that came from Brockway, the water line that came from Brockway. So we had agreed to install that manhole in case Brockway and Smith ever wants to hook into the sewer, they can sleeve that water line down to the Route 5, because the water line was across from Lydia's father. That's where, that's where they broke it off there, we broke off the water line there, and we put a manhole there for future purposes.
Okay, because that makes sense, because we discussed this prior, a couple of years ago, about Brockway and getting assistance to them and helping them out, so, okay.
Yeah, and they're looking at other options as well, but Brockway, but they have an, they, they have an avenue to go that direction if they want to.
And this change order does, is for $0.
Yes.
There's no money associated with the change order, so, okay.
Those are the best kind of change orders.
I know, they're very rare, too.
Well, it's an adjustment in the date.
Yes.
I don't have one in the signature file. Is this, it doesn't even look like there's a place for me to sign it.
Yes, on the first page, under the contractor's name, it says owner.
Oh, okay, but I don't think I have...
And the other change order associated with that is, like Marlene just mentioned, is that the extension of the contract due to the water, the added water line, they, we went back to Mass DOT and asked for an extension in the contract, a time extension.
Is that a different change order?
I thought it was in with that.
It's with, it's referenced on Page 2.
And it talks about it going to June 17.
Description of change, yes.
Okay, but I don't have a, a one for signature. There's nothing in the signature.
Oh, okay, so we'll have to, we'll have to get that then.
We should vote this, and then I could sign it later in the week or whatever?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number three, under contract number 2020-1.
Yes, I'll second that.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you don't, you don't have the, Karen, do you have it?
I have one, sorry.
Okay, so Karen will get one. That's great, if I could sign it tonight, that would be really great.
Yes, you take that up, yes.
Okay, so, Phil, that looks like we took care of your report, a little ahead of time.
That's fine.
So they're, they're outdone like in another week until, which date? With winter coming in?
Right, they're doing the skimming.
Actually, can we talk about the skim coat?
Sure, go right ahead.
Because, am I under the impression there is not going to be a skim coat before winter?
They met, they're gonna be paving next week.
Oh, next week? Why did I read that?
Between Monday and Wednesday, I sent the email out.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I thought I read that Mass DOT had given permission to not do that before winter.
Yeah, they're, they're, they met with Warner Brothers, who's gonna do the paving, so they're gonna do some paving next week, supposedly, we'll see.
Okay, over the rough parts? I'm, I mean, there's, you know, there's certain parts that are worse than other parts, so I'm, I'm hoping it's over those really bumpy areas.
Yeah, well, I think they're gonna make them go back and do the trenches that are sticking up for plowing purposes, I mean, that was a conversation I had with DOT, with Jay, so they're gonna get it ready for winter.
It's in pretty rough shape, and leaving it that way for the winter was not something I was hoping was gonna happen, so you're saying there is gonna be some, some improvements there?
Some improvements.
Well, I was gonna say, and it's not only the road now, just imagine when plows start, you know...
Right, frost heaves and whatnot.
Okay, he's supposed to be finished with the work this week, any work he has to do, and then next week, he's supposed to pave, so...
Would you mind sending us an update in the middle of next week?
As soon as I find out his schedule, I will.
Will that need, will you need to send out like a notice, like a code red about paving in that area, or?
Code, yes. I just want to nail down the exact...
I mean, it's a pretty busy road, it might be a good, good thing to do.
Because things change per weather.
Yeah.
We'll see, but that's the plan for right now.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
So on this project, because we did do the water main, and we did lower our contingency, where are we at now? Do we have any contingency left over on this project, or we're probably bottomed out, right?
If there's any, there's very little.
Yeah, it is very little.
There's very little, I would say.
All right.
Okay.
So the only other thing that we want to do on this project is have a meeting with the residents, right? That's another...
We're looking at November 30th to have that.
Right. Okay, Bill, thank you. We could also probably take up the Melanson proposal.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a proposal here from Melanson, and we're joined by Lori Del Olio, I don't know if you wanted to come up to the mic.
Sure.
This is a, this is an agreement for Melanson to do the accounting and reporting for the ARPA funds that are coming in.
Correct.
It'll be part of our larger discussion tonight, but it's almost $1 million in funds, and so it, in my opinion, makes a lot of sense to do this. My question was, you have the billing rate of 155 an hour, do you have, I mean, I just want to sort of have a sense of what we're getting into here, and like some sense of maybe how much time you're gonna need to spend, I don't know if you want to talk about it, monthly, quarterly?
Yeah, well, Marlene and I were talking about it, and it's an annual reporting requirement.
Okay.
So every April, we need to report it.
Okay.
So I'm guessing, like, throughout the year, I'm gonna be, you know, compiling all the information and only reporting it once a year, so we kind of figured eight to, what'd we say, 28, one to two days, I said like eight to 16 hours, I mean, it's hard to estimate, because you don't know what kind of projects you're gonna be doing, like, you're gonna have one project that's a huge project, that's gonna need, you know, one payment a month, or you're gonna have a project that needs 20 payments a month, you know, so it kind of depends on that.
Right.
But we gave a ballpark for like 20 hours a year, and that's just for the reporting, so that's the annual reporting, and then track monthly, all the expenses.
Right, okay.
And you have that stuff anyway, because of your work.
Right.
There's also been reference to quarterly reporting, that's not applicable?
Quarterly isn't for the NEUs.
I'm sorry?
The NEUs?
Oh, NEUs, yeah.
What's it stand for again?
Yeah, I forgot what, yeah.
I can't even...
Not, yeah, not entitled.
Nonentitlement unit, right, so that's towns and cities, and none of those, it's all annual, and I just confirmed again on your sheet, on the packet you sent, it's all every April, from now until April 2027.
Okay, and do you know, can ARPA funds be used to cover this expense?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Yep.
I have confirmed that, yeah.
Tell Lori and I to talk about that.
And I think also, just so everyone understands, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, is the individual departments are still responsible for the day-to-day operations and paperwork and submissions and submittals, as they are today.
Yep.
This is about you, Melanson, sort of putting it all together and doing the reporting.
Yeah, so as the payments are, as the payments come through, I'll be taking the invoices and not, you know, keeping them in a separate file, so then when I know, when I go to file it, that everything's there, and I just gotta kind of pull it all together, so...
Right.
Yeah, I would guess, I mean, there might be an hour here and there, you know, as we start the process, but I would guess that it would probably be more like, you know, February, March, April is when I'm preparing everything and getting ready for the final submission every year in April.
I think we understand that it'll probably fluctuate.
Seems very reasonable, very reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted some idea, that's all.
That's, yeah, that's a guesstimate.
So, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion?
No? Oh, I'll make a motion to, I thought you were gonna say next, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring, I guess, or retention of Melanson to do the ARPA grant accounting expense.
I'll, I'll second that, I think it's important that we have professional accounting on this, because there's $1 million, plus we can use the money from, from the fund for this, so it sort of makes sense.
Okay, great.
So I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for being here, Lori.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Nice to see you in person.
You, too.
Thank you.
And Marlene, I'm gonna sign this, but the rest of the stuff can be filled out, I assume, by you guys, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So we're just about, we got, we have about one minute, welcome assessors, until we can maybe get back into this hearing. We probably don't have anything that could just take one minute, so we'll just sit quietly.
The municipal aggregation.
How often does that happen at this meeting?
Diana, we can blow...
The municipal aggregation?
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, as, as you know, we, we contract with Colonial Powers.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
They oversee the administration of the municipal aggregation program.
Yep.
And that, the current contract we have with Finergy ends in August 2022, doesn't seem possible that will be coming up.
It was fast.
Yes, it was. So they're gonna be watching the market, and, and, you know, Colonial Powers thinking that maybe after the first of the year, the rates may drop, but anyway, in preparation for reviewing those rates, they asked if the selectmen would like to be involved in that. Previously, Brian and myself would have conference calls with Colonial Power.
I think that's great, if you guys are still...
Well, that's because I was the chairman at the time.
Oh.
Nice try.
Okay, that's...
But I don't mind doing it if you would like me...
We do have to get to the hearing, so yeah, whatever, I mean, I'm happy to participate in that.
Nice try, Madam Chair. I truly don't mind, I mean, if it's...
I thought I got to delegate in this role, okay. All right, yeah, we can work on that. So now we, I do want to get back to revisiting the, the tax classification hearing. We have, we are joined tonight by, by Jennifer, Jenny from the Assessor's Office, as well as two of our assessors, Jimmy Levalle and Scott McCoy, so I'll turn it over to you folks.
So, due to the assessor's recommendations, number one, allocation of the tax levy, the Board of Assessors recommends that a factor of one be adopted for FY 2022. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in Hatfield. Number two, shift from open space to residential class, the Board of Assessors recommends that no open space discount be granted for FY 22. Residential exemption, the Board of Assessors recommends that no residential exemption be granted for FY 22. Small commercial exemption, the Board of Assessors recommends that no small commercial exemption be granted for FY 2022.
And this represents no change from how things were done the previous fiscal year, just for people at home?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have to move these individually?
Yes, ma'am.
So I will make a motion at the Board of Assessors' suggestion and recommendation that the town use a factor of one to be adopted for fiscal year 22, 2022. This will keep a single tax rate for all classes of property in the town of Hatfield.
I'll second that.
A motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that, under two, shift from open space to residential class, the Board of Assessors recommends that no open space discount be granted for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
A motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
The motion should just say, though, that we moved that no open space discount be granted, right? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion under residential exemption, that no residential exemption be granted for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
A motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion under four, recommend that no small, small commercial exemption be granted for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
A motion made and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's all I got.
See you next year.
And if you'll sign the LA 5.
What's that?
The LA 5 that I left for you guys to sign.
Oh, yes, I will sign that.
And just Karen, if you give it to Karen after, I'll get it from you.
And, and all three of us just sign in this big space?
The back page, yep, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I just have to sign somewhere there. Okay, so we, we do have the 6:30 timeframe to start the meeting with the Finance Committee and Capital Improvement. We've managed to get through the rest of the agenda, and we did have Chief Flaherty on the agenda, but he, he left because of a call, so we, maybe we should just take a break until, because it does say 6:30.
Take a break.
All right, we'll take a little break.
Thank you.
Sorry for the technical difficulties, nice to have you here, as well as the other members of the Finance Committee, welcome, and the members of the Capital Planning Committee who are joining us tonight. So the purpose of assembling this group is to begin the discussions on, on how we're going to use the, the award of $971,746, which is our community's share of the American Rescue Plan Act monies, which are called ARPA monies, just for the folks at home, so, so the town will be getting that significant sum of money, but there are some very specific parameters as to how we can spend it, and so we wanted to assemble the financial team, including capital planning, because the, the hope is that we'll be able to maybe check some things off of the boxes that we had on the capital plan, and, and move forward. So for the sake of tonight's discussion, we have, I have two different sheets here, Marlene, oh, I see, okay, there's...
Yeah, there was one updated this afternoon.
Updated one, it's in your left hand.
This one? Oh, this one is the right one?
One says administration at the top?
Yes, okay.
Yes, that's the correct.
Okay, does everyone have that, that sheet? What we've asked, we've, we've asked departments to get us a list of the projects they think that they would like to have funded with, with ARPA monies, with these ARPA monies, and is it okay if we go on, Marlene?
Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, okay, this is gonna be sent to you, the, the most recent, Marlene is gonna email it to you.
Okay. Can you, can you tell, tell us the amount that, that they have given us?
Yes, not, yep, $971,746.
Good, thanks.
And so what we, we do have a spreadsheet here of the various things that departments are promoting, proposing, that we do with this, and of course, those asks total $1.5 million, so we have to, you know, weed through this and, and set some priorities and, and figure out, you know, the best way to, to spend these funds. So I'm gonna just give a minute for Marlene to send that to you and all of you to receive that, it is an updated one. Did you get the last one that totaled, well, it's also $1.5 million, but $1,550,000? No, you have nothing? Okay, okay.
While we're waiting for that, could, oh, go ahead.
Is there a way we can share that?
I don't know, maybe Marlene will sell.
Okay.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
So just for the, I, I know the people on here and the people online understand that, but just so the folks at home who are gonna be watching us down the road, these funds from, the ARPA funds are the COVID relief funds granted to the town of Hatfield, but we have a few years to actually encumber, spend, you know, whatever we want to say, use, so the way I'm envisioning tonight is to sort of collectively go through it, kind of a first look, and not necessarily making any, unless there's something that just stands out as a no-brainer, to, because there could be other projects that come, so I'm just thinking we're sort of gonna go over this.
Yes.
Have some discussion about them, if we need to go back to whatever department submitted it, if we need clarification of some sort, that that's what we would do, but we were hoping to meet together at, I think it was our, either two weeks ago or a month ago, and things changed, and so here we are tonight.
And, and so also, you know, I think part of the discussion should be letting townspeople And, and so also, you know, I think part of the discussion should be letting townspeople understand the parameters, right? So it's not just a pot of money that we can do anything we want with. There are some criteria that have been identified by the federal government and how we can do this. The, I mean, I know we have this big compliance and reporting guide. I have something, and I'll defer to Lori on this, but it's dated June, that listed eligible uses, but I understand there's been some changes to that, so this is probably not the list I should.
I know, Marlene and I were talking about that. I think that list is just, that's not.
It's very general.
Yeah, somebody must have just taken notes and provided that, because it doesn't include everything. And the newest guidance was just put out, I think, on the 12th of November.
Okay. And this is dated the 5th, so this is even out of date?
Yeah, I meant to ask Marlene about this. I'm not sure if this, because the one that Sharon and I were looking at it earlier was dated the 15th.
Well, and it's another good reason to not just.
Yeah.
Plan for all of this, because there's clearly, this is still a changing.
Interim guidance.
Yes.
It's a final interim guidance, so it's still.
Final interim.
Right.
That's really, that's cute.
But it's not final, it's still.
That's really cute, yeah.
They hope that will be coming up soon, and they don't expect much to change, but.
Definitely maybe.
Right, you might want to wait until the final guidance before you start spending.
Right. But we can at least start discussing.
Right.
Okay. But just to give, in its simplest terms, it identifies sort of the top, the top of the list of every eligible project or eligible use that I've seen is water and sewer infrastructure. So there's that. And then there's obviously some COVID-related, things related to COVID recovery and response. And then, and then it gets into a lot of other things that I'm, I'm not sure fit with Hatfield as a community being able to do with things and grants and things like that. So just for townspeople to have sort of a general idea of what the criteria is for using this money.
Yeah, and the infrastructure and the water piece of it, the water sewer piece, is an EPA document that is also being required, you know, setting the requirements for what you can use the ARPA funds for. So that's another level of, you know, kind of guidance that we need to make sure we follow that too.
Right. So this will be a lengthy process, both in deciding what we're going to do, making sure everything is actually eligible, and then executing and reporting.
Right.
So we're going to need three years.
Five years.
Five years.
2027.
We're going to need all of that, yeah.
So in order to find if something is eligible, do we have to submit it to the, somebody to review it?
No, I don't think, I don't think the Treasury is going to do that. In the past, the state had done it for CARES, but there, and Marlene had already reached out to them, and they're not going to do that again. So you're kind of on your own with the guidance that they have. You know, you can ask questions.
And then you submit the money.
I'm sorry, Diana, too many people talking at once. I can't, I, I hear two different conversations.
Okay, we're only having one. Is there an echo, maybe?
It seems like all the mics are on, so you can hear people talking, maybe not audibly in the room, but they're right next to the microphone.
It was Marlene and Karen talking.
Oh, it was Marlene and Karen. Sorry, they were trying to, they're, sorry, they're trying to work on screen sharing.
Kind of pull up the spreadsheet for you.
Yep. And we've also been joined by our treasurer, Sharon has come in as part of this discussion as well.
Can you see them?
Yep.
I saw the spreadsheet.
Yes.
All right.
So I guess at this point, it makes sense to just run through this. And we have people in the room that can speak to their own departments, and then maybe, Marlene, you're able to speak to ones for folks that aren't here. So did you want to speak to, Marlene, the administration is the contract we discussed earlier with Malanson to do the accounting and the reporting, so that's.
That's roughly $3,100.
Right. Right, okay. And then the Board of Health COVID Coordinator payroll estimate through.
So we started using the ARPA funds for the COVID coordinator the middle of August. And so from August through June 30th of 2022, the amount would be approximately $30,800. So we're just looking at the current fiscal year.
Right.
Okay.
Next, the fire department has submitted a request to use $19,000 for three life packs, three life pack 1,000 and six life pack CR2. He's also requesting two highway message boards to support COVID alerts and notifications. That's $38,000 for two boards. $5,500 for air filtration system for the fire apparatus. This is two units, and this includes installation.
Are the life packs, the cell-contained breathing apparatus, is that what those are? Or are those something else?
I believe they are, but I'm not certain.
Bob was hoping to be here, but he had a call.
He got a call.
Maybe he'll be able to join us at some point, and we could, we could revisit.
I heard that they could possibly be defibrillators.
Oh, yeah. No, yeah, that makes more sense, Daryl.
Is it possible?
Yeah, that makes more sense.
I googled it.
Yeah.
Oh, they are defibrillator units, okay.
And, and Diana, are we, are we going to ask questions on each one? Are we going to go through the whole list and then go back for questions?
I think we should ask questions as we go.
Yeah, just so, those are remote, though. Chief Flaherty was here, but he got called out to an emergency, so he's not, he's no longer in the room with us, just FYI.
So, so can I ask a question about the Board of Health?
Yes.
The 30,000, I'm assuming that we have no other funding source for that this year.
Correct.
That we would need that 30,800 to pay for that, for this, for this fiscal year, correct?
That's correct. Last year, it was paid for out of the previous round of COVID, out of the CARES Act money. And so rather than any town department expending the funds, it's being, it was earmarked to be used out of the ARPA funding, Daryl.
Okay.
And I don't know if you caught it, and some of which has already been expended going back to August. That, that's included in, in the 30,800 is from August through the end of June in 2022.
And we don't anticipate that we're going to get any other COVID relief money to help with things like that?
Not that I've heard about.
We haven't heard anything. I mean, this is COVID relief.
Yeah.
Just asking a question, that's all. You know, trying to mentally try to, you know, prioritize some of these as we talk about them, that's all.
Right. And then, so moving through, I just would like to move through the fire department and ambulance ones, just sort of saying what they are, but hopefully we'll be rejoined by the chief.
I do have the fire chief's submission here. I just retrieved my packet.
Okay.
Our book packet. So the, the life packs, as the chief references, they are automated external defibrillators.
Okay. And are they replacing ones we already have? Because we have some. Well, again, that's questions for the chief once he gets back.
He doesn't mention replacing.
Okay.
The life packs, though, they will, the life pack 1,000 will replace a unit in the fire chief's vehicle, and that unit is obsolete, and the other is replace, replaces the police chief's, as this is also obsolete.
So we have then, we have the highway message boards.
So, so the message boards seem extraordinarily expensive. We, we, we had a chance to look at this list a week ago, or whenever Finance Committee left, and it'll be helpful to hear from Chief Flaherty, but $38,000 for a couple of sign boards seems like a whole lot of money.
Yeah, I would have no idea what, what a sign board goes for, so we'll, we'll have to speak.
I think there's also a conversation about, you know, I mean, I, I see here on the list that it's there for COVID alerts and notifications. I mean, just given that everyone in town can sign up to get regular calls about all kinds of COVID information, like, it's unclear who that's really designed to reach, like, people coming into town, like, who, I mean, it just doesn't seem like we have any specific COVID concern in Hatfield that isn't happening in the general area. So do we really need those to alert people to specific COVID emergencies taking place in town?
Given the conversations we had earlier, I also have some questions about what the message would be and who would actually decide to put it up there. So there's, there's, that would be.
So maybe a question mark or something goes next.
I mean, at this point, I think there's a question mark next to everything. We're just running through, but yeah.
Well, right, but I mean, in particular, you know.
Yes.
And I think I would look at this too, also somewhat of a wish list.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so we don't always get what we wish for, so.
Right, right. And it might be that it's a message board that you could use for COVID, but obviously there'd be a lot of other community uses.
Right, right.
I did see something pop up in the chat, but it's vanished, and I can't see it. Kristy said something?
I think she was asking where the school's request originated from.
Well, when we get to that, maybe we could talk about that. Okay. So let's just, just, let's just read down the list for fire and ambulance, and then I would like to sort of table that discussion until we're joined by the chief.
He's on his way back, so 20 minutes and he'll be here.
Okay. So Marlene, do you want to just read down the list?
Sure. So we're at ambulance, right?
Yep.
Isolation gowns and cleaning wipes, request is $1,000. Also a request to compensate essential employees, approximately $2,000 each at approximately 50 employees. So that would be $100,000. I understand that some of that does include emergency personnel, but that might be something that the fire chief may, may like to speak to.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the last.
Fire committee, we had lots of questions on that one, too.
Yeah. And then the last one is the loss revenue.
Loss of ambulance revenue, and.
We do have some paperwork about that.
That's $12,000, right. And so the chief included paperwork, documentation in the packet. He, he used a calculation, I believe that is, was not actually correct. The, the state has a formula that needs to be used, and that's based on the town's total general revenue.
Well, it wasn't correct, but you need to take, the way, the way we have to do it is we have to take the entire town, all the revenue.
Right. The calculation used wasn't.
Some excluded revenue that we don't have to account for, and then you have to base it, that's the base year, and then you have to take four years out, every year, do the calculation again to see if, in total, the town lost revenue. So just because they might have lost revenue within ambulance, doesn't mean they lost revenue in total. So now that the contract's signed, I can do the calculation to see if we're even eligible for that. And then if we are eligible, the DOR, I mean, the Treasury will just send it to us, like, say it comes up with $40,000, then we can do whatever we want with it. It doesn't fall under any of these guidelines. Has to be appropriated by town meeting, but it doesn't have to fall under these guidelines because it's, now it's just money for the town, because it was lost revenue.
Okay, so that's a discussion we could have a little further down the line.
Yeah, once I do the calculation and let you guys know if we're even eligible for it, and if there's even funds available for that based on the calculations, then we'll know whether we can use that or not.
Okay. Okay, so.
Or to follow.
If, yes. So if we could scroll down a little bit, we get to the DPW part. Phil, did you want to speak to these items? Maybe come up to the mic?
I'm going to save you some money.
Okay. Want to go through these just item by item?
So replace the fuel tanks at the highway garage, $54,000. That's to fund the rest of that project. Town meeting voted 95,000. A bid came in at 148,000, so we're looking for $54,000 to complete the project.
And there had been discussion about using these funds for that.
Right.
At previous meetings.
On committee.
So in my opinion, that might be one item we actually vote on tonight, because we have entered into that contract.
Yeah.
So, but let's run through your, let's run through the whole list, and then we'll backtrack.
So the next item would be extend public water to wastewater facility. So we had a discussion, we had a staff meeting right after our, my meeting with the Finance Committee a few weeks ago, and there were some questions about the well, how the contamination happened. So we went to the source, I guess, to say, to find out exactly what happened down there. So the original well was contaminated with pesticides or whatever they used in the fields years and years ago. So they punched a new well, don't know, before my time, and that has a trace of some kind of pesticide again. So our recommendation now is to remove the 190 out of here, and don't bring the water down there, after having our staff meeting with the two operators down there, I mean, the superintendent and the operator, that we feel that to put a little bit of money aside to either do the filtration system on the well, or to eventually, if we had to punch a new well, but I don't think a new well is in the picture, because the well that they punched again is, has a slight trace of contaminant. So we're looking into filtration system. So the 190, and it's really not worth it to us to bring the public water.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, given, it's a big number to.
It's a big number, it's 190,000. It's a big number for one facility. I would say, you know, let's set maybe 20,000 aside just to do, and just in case we have to do a filtration system or something, for now, instead of the 190.
And I'm not sure that you could do it for one facility. Part of the research I did said that you had to do it for multiple. There was like a bunch of houses.
This is a lot of money to service one.
And so it may not have met the criteria of.
I assume they have an alternate drinking source down there for the employees, like a water cooler or something like that, okay?
Yes, we have, we have, you know, bottled water.
I never realized until this came up that there wasn't water at the wastewater treatment plant. I bet you tons of.
It ends, it ends where the houses end, I assume.
Yeah, right, they're right in the middle of the two, of the two ends.
The two lines, yeah, and there's no one else served by that, closing that loop.
Just never, just never thought of it.
Right?
Is 20,000, is that like more than enough, or is that?
It's probably more than enough.
Okay.
So if we change that to extend to.
So we'll change this to.
Filtration.
Well filtration, I would say.
Well filtration.
Phil, how are you going to determine if, in fact, the filtration system is the way to go?
We're having Dave Prigga look into it.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Water.
Okay, next.
Next is 50,000 to extend the broadband to the wastewater facility. Again, I'll save you some money. So we've entered into a contract already with Comcast. Comcast is putting up $7,500 into the project, and I think ours, I don't know what I told the Finance Committee, I had the numbers in front of me when I met with them, but it's around $9,000 only that we need out of that.
Okay.
12. 12. 12 in total.
No, that was the portion of the check that was from us.
So it was about, it was about $20,000 to.
Versus the 15.
To extend internet access, appropriate internet access.
So 12,000.
But we've already spent it?
Well, no, we signed a contract, and we paid it out of the operating budget, because they needed the commitment from the town.
Okay, so then the ARPA funds could replenish the budget, okay.
Nice.
Okay, so that's down to 12,000. Okay.
So with the master plan, that was very lengthy and pages and pages long, there's a bunch of generators within that project. So every generator that is in the project for upgrading, which would go through the USDA loan, is over $100,000 for each, for each station. So we went out, we have the generator that we replaced at this wastewater facility, the contractor is under state award, so we went to him and got some pricing. So these are the prices. So the generator, these are all identified app on the master plan to replace, to put in. So the generator for Maple Street Pump Station, which is the main pump station in town, is 125,000.
When you say master plan, you mean capital plan?
Master plan, the shore master.
Wastewater.
Master plan, yeah.
That was completed a few years ago.
Yeah.
And then you have generators, so one, the, so the one at Maple Street is 125, but then it looks like you get Berry Street and King Street, both of them total 125?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. The one on Maple Street Pump Station is the largest pump station in town. And as you know, during the Halloween storm when the power was off for six days, we had to hire Greg's wastewater to transport the waste from that pump station so it didn't flood out and people could still use their sanitary services 24 hours a day.
Right.
For the last six days.
Because there was no.
Because there's no power to run them.
I remember.
I'm sure you do, neighbor. You're a good neighbor.
Okay, so.
So that's 125,000.
So those two items would be staying on there?
Yes. So.
Okay.
The water system control upgrade is to upgrade controls at the water, this is not the wastewater, it's the water filtration plant. We spent about 55 to 60,000 already in repairs over the years. It's from 1997 original. So we had an estimate from Elmo Electric, you know, and that's the price, $50,000.
Can I interrupt you for one sec? It was 85. I apologize. I looked it right up for you.
Yeah, I thought it was 85.
Extend the.
12,000?
Yep.
Sorry, that's 8,500, correct?
Glad I, yep, 8,500. I checked.
Okay. Okay.
That's why I said, when you said maybe, I'm like, oh, I better double check.
I thought it was less.
Okay, so that's the 50,000 for water system control upgrade. Next.
So the next one on the list is to replace the storm water drainage on School Prospect to Chestnut. So as if anybody noticed today, we were up there cleaning all the catch basins up there because we've had some flooding issues. So we talked to a resident because we still didn't understand what was going on up there, but the resident clarified exactly what happened. So back in the day, I guess, so all of Raymond Avenue, and there's some drainage behind the houses on School Street that tie into the wastewater, I mean, into the storm water system on School Street. So it ran down towards Chestnut Street, down to the brook, but prior to the brook, it crossed over between Casey, the old custodian, crossed over the street and dumped out in the back there somewhere.
Casey.
Casey Burt.
Next to Kristy and, yeah.
Crosses, yeah, where the vineyard is.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's where it used to dump out there. It used to be a clay tile pipe there that drained into the drainage ditch behind them houses. That's all filled in. It's a clay tile pipe was all broke. So now that portion of the whole drainage system does nothing but saturate the ground, comes up out of the ground and comes up out of the catch basins. That's why there's water running there continuously during the winter. So our goal is to run a new pipe from the corner of Raymond Avenue down to where the existing drainage dumps off into that brook that's live.
Okay.
It's a pretty top priority. I mean, we were up there all day trying to figure it out. We figured it out.
Okay.
Okay, so you have the two generators, one on Ferry Street, one on King Street. That's for 125,000.
Mm-hmm.
And the rest of this is from the master plan. But again, my discussion and our discussion with the finance committee is this is all going into the USDA loan.
Okay.
Portion of all these, the next, the 131, the 150, the 158, and the 168. I would rather allocate money elsewhere, either extend the sewer or do something positive instead of this. Because all this is just.
We have another funding source available for that that's extremely low interest, right?
Right.
So, okay.
So just a thought, my two cents is that allocate other projects somewhere.
Other water sewer projects.
Water and sewer infrastructure.
Did I put Phil in the spot for a second?
Of course.
So.
Diana, that was the opinion of the finance committee to just clarify that that would be better use for those funds to do something where we're extending something or doing something more visible with this money.
Right, exactly. I agree. So.
I was just gonna, so Phil, if you had to prioritize those first, one, two, three, four, five, those first six or seven, I mean, do you have a priority? I mean, is it that water drainage on School Street, would you say? I mean.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know.
Or the generators?
Generator.
I mean, I know they're all important. I mean, I didn't, you know, if we get to the point where we have to sort of.
The water systems upgrade is very critical, I think. The controls at the water filtration plant, that's critical. That's critical.
We won't hold you to these. I just want to have an idea. So as we go through all of them, and we meet again with finance and capital plan, and we can say, oh, remember when Phil said this was really the top priority type thing?
So the water system control upgrade would be your first priority?
If you're, if you're already allocating the money for the highway garage fuel tanks, I mean.
Well, I think that's.
I think we have to do that. That was sort of something we had discussed.
And 8,500 for the broadband.
Right. That's an easy one. Yeah.
So Phil, correct me, I just did a quick calculation. That's 492.5 for that list of projects. 250 for the, for the generators, 160 for the, I'm sorry, 50 for the water systems control, 110 for the School Street, right? And then 54,000 for the fuel tanks and 20,000 for the filtration, and 8,500 for the broadband.
Yep.
And that came up to what?
That comes to 492.5.
So we can, 500.
Yeah. But, but if you take out the 54, which you've said you're probably going to do, and 85, you're looking at 62.5. So you're looking at 430,000 left. If you approve, those are the two things that he said he wants to do tonight.
Right. And I did a quick calculation of the ones that are going to be part of the USDA grant, roughly about $600,000. I don't know if anybody else did that, but.
Yep.
So.
So, you know, like I said, the water systems control upgrade, then I would say probably, you know, at least put the generator in Maple Street as number two.
Oh, as number two. Okay.
You know.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Are we sure that the fuel tank qualifies under these, though? I went back and for, like Lori and I were discussing earlier, we're not sure that this meets this new list that came out just yesterday of whether this qualifies or not.
Well, hopefully it'll be on tomorrow's list.
But should we ask, the concern we had, I'll speak for you, and you can tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, is that if we, should we ask first versus having to say yes to it because we need to do the project right away, and then later we find out it didn't qualify and then we have to backtrack? I don't know.
I, well, you guys are the financial people. I think we need to move forward regardless, right? And the finance committee can certainly join in. Our hope was there would be a category where that additional funding would qualify. If, as soon as we know definitively, one way or the other, we'll just have to meet again with the finance committee and say, ultimately, this funding has to come from somewhere else.
Yeah. Right. Go ahead.
Our discussion revolved around groundwater protection.
Right. There was a list, a specific detailed list.
Removing underground fuel storage tanks that are unmonitored would be a groundwater protection activity.
True, but the part that I read talked about whether the, if the facility was leaking, this isn't leaking. So I just don't want to, you know, not put that out there that we're not sure if that, and now you've been hired to manage it. Maybe it's worth asking the question just so that we don't.
Yeah, I will.
Have, you know.
Yeah.
But I mean, it does stay.
I had reached out to the state and asked them.
Anything in the clean water and sewer, you have to go by that.
Yeah.
Terms of the.
So I reached out to our contact person at the Office of Administration and Finance. He wouldn't answer the.
Yeah, the state.
He provided the FAQs. It's a very length, I have it up there. It's a very lengthy document. So we can go through that. I will be glad to go through that and, and look through it and see if they identify something similar to that project.
Well, and there's somebody that we talked about.
Marlene?
Yes.
If.
We don't need the.
Now, we have some time on this because assuming the selectmen have signed the contract, it's going to be, what, 16, 20 weeks before this fuel tank even.
Correct.
Shows. So we're not really going to have to pay for this until the spring. And so this does give us time if, if, decides to submit the 54,000. If the state then says, nope, it doesn't work, then, you know, we do have some time and we need to figure out some alternatives. But we, the finance committee, and the rest can correct me, felt like, you know, this would be the good first choice of how to pay for the additional costs of the fuel tanks.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Does that make sense?
Yep. So we'll see what we can find out on that information. Okay.
Right. And I, Sharon, I certainly understand the concerns and, you know, we of course want, want to spend this money correctly. So. I think the bottom line, too, is that we were prepared to go to alternate funding sources.
Right. One way or the other, it's going to get paid for, but we need to explore this as our first choice.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
I would just be remiss if I didn't say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this Lori and I to make sure now that.
And I'm assuming that that same scenario will present itself with some of these other expenditures as we make decisions. Okay, so next is the items for the school. Kristy, are you able to speak to those?
I, I can.
Okay.
So I think there may be a little disconnect of what came on the list from schools. So what you're seeing on the school list is stuff that the school has already spent funds on.
That's correct.
So their understanding was that was what was allowed to go on the list. And so these are things that we have purchased already. It would be lovely and incredibly helpful if they got reimbursed. But I think what's missing from the schools is anything that we might raise our hands for that currently would sit on a capital planning list, that might have some urgency to it that might qualify. So things like a new roof for the elementary school would be our top priority from a capital planning standpoint if that meets the needs and qualifies for this list. That's not currently reflected.
Well, I'm going based on the list that the interim school superintendent submitted.
I, I understand, and I've caught up with him since I saw the list tonight to ask, just because it didn't reflect the conversations we have had in budget meetings. And so his understanding was that it was only things that had already been purchased.
So just for clarification, these items listed here that you're saying have already been purchased would have also qualified for CARES Act money. Were they purchased with CARES Act money, or were they purchased with the school budget?
School budget.
Okay.
But they were after the CARES money was.
It was expended. Okay.
They're, these are post CARES money. I'm, I think they're probably getting funded at the moment out of our SO3 funding, which is, you know, money that could be budgeted over three years. But because of our budget circumstance at the moment, our SO3 funds are very front loaded into this year.
What are SO3 funds?
Even I don't know what that one is.
Can you explain that, Kristy?
Essentially, there's been sort of three phases of funding, federal funding for COVID support, I guess. So it's a very, our SO3 funds, while they could also help this kind of, you know, PPE and stuff like that, it's really, our funds are very much more focused on, on educational fronts. So instructionally focused and staffing. So it's allowing us to sort of close the gap for learning for kids since they've had such a short period of time in school, just trying to help ramp back up. And so federal funds to help social, emotional needs and educational gaps.
Okay.
Is it grant funding?
Is it a grant?
It is grant funded. Our portion of SO3 funds was 226,000 this year. But that, again, is eligible this year, but allowed to be encumbered over multiple years.
And so is that not money you were aware of?
No, I did. I just didn't know it was called SO3 funding. They definitely have grants that they have gotten in and received that are COVID related, and I booked all of it. I just never heard it called as an SO3 before tonight. I was like, oh, that's a new word to me.
I think SO3 is probably the latest installment of what started as CARES. Like they're.
It's school driven. They're very specific when they come in.
So it's school specific CARES money?
Exactly. Not even CARES. It's grants that are COVID based. Like, I don't have.
Don't these seem like completely appropriate things to spend those funds on?
It's not that they aren't. Let me, I'm pulling up for SO3 allowable things. It's just the priority. So it can be used for things that are cleaning related, but it's also focused on mental health, summer school, and instructional use going forward.
I guess my, if the school got over $200,000 worth of this money, it seems like 10,000 of that could have gone to these expenses.
Well, I think, Kristy, I think part of the conversation that didn't get relayed to you when we met with Michael, Marlene was there about this, was that the school took a majority of the CARES money. And so that's why we were trying to focus on some other things.
Right.
Kind of first priority because nobody else in town kind of used that money. And that's where kind of the list was driven that way. Not that the school couldn't put things on here, but that's kind of the message to him was that, you know, they spent the bulk of that other money.
Right. We did, we did direct most of that money to the school.
I hear that. And I think it's, it's probably helpful for you guys to know, too, that the school has been really aggressive, usually is a sad word to use, but in this case, appropriate, about going after other funding. And so, you know, we went after an MSBA accelerated repair grant for the roof. We're not eligible for it. So we're, you know, we have looked at other sources, being mindful of town funds. So I just, I'm just finding this list tonight, and it's not the conversation we had had within the school teams. So I'm just catching up. So sorry for that. But we did get, for example.
Do you have an idea the number?
PPE covered because Gene was really resourceful and found things that took care of the rest of this year and probably part of next year.
Okay.
There are. Question, Diana?
My question was, what is, do you have a ballpark number on the roof? Is that on the capital plan?
Not even on the capital plan yet.
Yeah, it's not even on the capital plan.
Coming in for this year, but the roof at the elementary school is not on the capital plan yet.
Okay. Oh.
And Kristy, do you have any kind of.
Do you recall that coming up last year?
So I.
I don't, I don't recall.
I don't either. And I'm looking at the one, the last that I have in front of me, and I don't have.
Right.
School roof replacement on the capital.
I'd love to get a copy of the old one because I can't find any one on our end that has that. We've had a little turnover. So it would be great to see that. As our new, very seasoned superintendent came in, I think facilities are the part that keep him up at night in terms of some concerns. And I, obviously, when we saw, I mean, there were a lot of schools in the area that had a lot of trouble, some that couldn't open for weeks because of rain issues and mold. And we, we have had a leak in the elementary school roof for some time. And so I think the urgency of that need bumped up with recent weather.
Okay. Do you have an estimate for though, Kristy? Ballpark?
We don't. The roofing company came in, they checked it out, and then they had an internal disagreement. They were supposed to be back out on Saturday to reevaluate and come back, and we haven't seen their updated proposal yet.
Okay.
An estimate yet.
Right. Okay. Okay. So it's just some information we need to gather. And we also need to find out if that would qualify as an authorized expense.
And I would imagine that replacing the elementary school roof would be way more than the money that we have in ARPA funds.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Kristy.
Two things. Well, I know she's going to get us the amount, but I'm also wondering, did you say that it would not qualify for the SBA funding, the school building system?
It does not qualify. We went, we tried to get the MSBA accelerate. It does not qualify. It hasn't, it hasn't been long enough.
I don't think that, I don't think that.
Do you happen to know if it's long enough because of the roof, the age of the roof, or is it long enough between projects that we've done in the district?
My understanding, but this might not be accurate, though, Brian. My understanding is it, it's the age of the roof is the issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not that old, but we, everybody in New England keeps putting flat roofs on their buildings.
I know. I know.
But, you know.
Public building roofs are.
Phil, did you have anything to add or?
No, I think she's right. I think it is the age of the roof. That's why it doesn't qualify. But the other part is that I know that they were going to another source, and because of the project you did at the Smith Academy, you had to wait a certain number of years.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So it's probably a double.
And I think that's why it's not even, wasn't even listed on the capital plan. But I know this year.
Because of the roof and the. Because of the roof and the windows that we did at Smith Academy, what, like, three years ago?
I think it had to be a five-year window or something, if I'm not mistaken, don't take my word for that.
I think regardless, we should get it on the capital plan.
Yes, agree.
I mean, if you look at the capital plan, I don't have it in front of me, but if you look at it, it goes out years.
Right, there's no question it shouldn't be on there.
Years and years. So like, we should be having on there, be thinking about it.
It's a five-year deal.
Yep.
This year will be projecting out to FY '27, I believe.
Yep. Okay, so it, I think the bottom line for the school department, we need a little bit more information. And I guess, I guess part of that, what I'm looking for is more information about the overall picture of what the school has taken in, in CARES Act funding and things that could help all of this, because that's part of us making our decisions, right? Other departments don't have that special flow of funds to help them with this. And it sounds like the school has significant amounts. So I think that, to me, that's something to take into consideration as we're dividing this, these ARPA funds up.
I'm happy to prepare that, Diana, but, and I will present it with some, with as whole a picture as I can, because some of the other things that have come into play, like our Title I funding got cut in half this year from where we were a year ago. So there have been some significant hits to our planned budget as well that we've been offsetting with those funds.
Okay, yeah, that picture is really important.
Yeah.
That whole picture. Does, did the finance committee want to pipe in at all before we move on from the school portion of this? Okay.
Well, it would be helpful to have numbers, numbers from the school on the roof and projects that would, 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 could potentially be used for the school, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I would like that, I would like that roofing to be in front of capital planning as soon as possible, because if we get to town meeting, and that will be a problem. You know, I don't know how much this is gonna cost, but I can well imagine it's gonna meet the capital requirement. So I don't want to get to town meeting in the spring and not have, had it been reviewed and approved by capital planning, if that's what needs to happen, because that will really make it troublesome to deal with.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But to your point, Christie, like...
In terms of impacting people's lives because kids couldn't be in school, that's the one that worries me.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of that.
You cut out in the beginning, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, in terms of the impact to a lot of people's lives, the roof is the one that concerns me. Because a, a big issue there could impact kids' ability to be in school.
We saw that happen locally. Yep. Okay. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
So we just have one more here to discuss, and then we can backtrack to the chief. Marlene, is this...
The next one, a last item, I should say, is 23 air purifiers. These are for town departments, offices, for all offices. So we're, we're looking at approximately $1,000 for each one. So the total request is 23,000.
Lydia got one from a grant for the town clerk's office, so I use that number as my base of an estimate. Not saying we have to get the same one that she got, but for, so that each office would have one in space, and that would include the DPW and the fire and the...
Waste water treatment plant.
Waste water treatment plant.
Library.
Yep, library, so all the spaces. I mean, some are gonna, you might find that the library needs a little bigger one, but maybe the DPW needs smaller ones for each office. So I'd be happy to take this one on, because it was kind of my push that I think it would be nice to, you know...
I'd like to see a list of the, the locations.
Well, and would you want me to go ahead and figure out pricing, like the space ones for it, so I can give you a better breakdown? Or just a list of the spaces for now?
I would just see a list of the spaces for now, I don't know what other people would like.
And just moving forward on that note, you know, which is probably a good idea to do this, is that after the year or whatever, what does it take to maintain those?
Yeah.
Because I'm sure there's a cost associated somewhere with it.
Forget the filters.
I was just gonna say, if there's filters...
Well, that was gonna be my next question, because we can see how expensive filters are. And then it's, it's, it's also a big ticket item that, you know, how long would they be used? You know? I guess clean air is always a good thing, but...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Would you, I know that the school did buy air purifiers and new filters for those. And as it happens, we had 20 new ones this year and replacement filters for the 46 we bought last year. And based on the receipt Michael turned in for this, that was only $7,444. I don't know if the needs need to be different about those purifiers, but would...
Maybe that number could be significantly less, that would be great.
It was a very ballparked, because I don't, I would have, need Phil's help to do square foot, because that, listen, I'm your treasurer, but I don't know about space-wise. To be able to put one in this room, to say, you need this size for this room and this size. So I just went with the one that she got, that the state kind of gave her, and that was the price of that one.
Right, I don't want to put Bob on the spot, but, but he was involved with the chief clarity who's joined us.
Do you want to join us at a microphone?
After your call, thanks for coming back.
Yeah, thanks.
Right, because we had ordered the, the air purifier for the schools and, and probably elsewhere last year. Do you remember what they cost, or was there a certain...
The, the school with what they bought last year was, I believe it was about $10,200.
Was that one for each classroom at the time?
At the time, yes, that was, that was the original thought. I believe at one point, a couple of the classrooms did not get them, but they were classrooms that were empty at the beginning of the school year, and I believe this is part of what Christie was talking about. They had bought some additional ones as the school was ramping back up to full capacity.
Okay. So, but aren't they, are the air purifiers kind of like a stand, a stand-up fan type, I mean, size-wise?
The ones that the school's got, I'm not sure exactly about the square footage. I think when I started looking at them, they're good for up to about 200 square feet. So the ones in the school may be slightly undersized for the classrooms themselves. They're only about 18 inches high, eight inches square.
The ones at the school, I'm pretty sure cover 800 square feet to a room, and they ran up somewhere in like $225 to $250 apiece.
That's a lot less than the one we got here.
Yeah, they came two packs when they bought them.
And I'm guessing due to their size, the filters aren't these huge, like, you know, restaurant exhaust system filters. They're just something you pop out, slide it in, and shut, shut the little trap door, and away you go.
Should be, yes.
Okay, so hence...
Maybe it does make sense to get a little bit more information about them if this number could be much lower.
I do think that we should have them in, in all the offices that are occupied.
Put that together.
Yep.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
I think they came out to, for both companies, between, were the two places that they purchased them, it was a two-pack for $549.
Yeah, that's right, I remember the two-pack thing now that you say that.
Okay. Okay. So Bob, we, we, we read through your stuff, but we skipped over it so that you would have a chance to speak to it.
Sure.
So if we could just go back, I think we, we did figure out that the three life packs, or the total of nine life packs, those are defibrillators.
Correct.
Okay, and those are, some are replacements and some are just new?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about defibrillators?
Sure.
I noticed, I was at another school, and I noticed that attached to one of their outbuildings was a defibrillator. It's in a, obviously, it's gotta be in a weatherproof case and this, that, and the other thing, and, you know. I'm wondering if we should think about something like that outside at one school, both schools, maybe even something here at the town hall. So I don't know if that's on anybody's radar, but I thought maybe that would be something I thought that it would be easily accessible and, you know, put a big sign up or whatever. Because I know all the coaches are hauling defibrillators out to practice every day and bringing them back in and that kind of stuff. And I, I know they're doing it, and they're doing it diligently. But if we had one or two outside at the school, then maybe they wouldn't have to drag those things out to practice every day, because they're already out there and mounted on the, you know, we had a new...
Some of the fields are kind of far, though.
Couple of new, well, we've got, you know, you could put one on the softball dugouts, you could put one up on the field hockey field, and you'd have pretty easy access to either one. If we ever get the dugouts on the baseball field, then maybe...
We're working on it.
I know you are. Something like that.
That sounds like a grant opportunity.
So putting in for AEDs through grants is a little bit tricky.
Yeah.
I have yet to find one. Some of these, the LifePak CR2s, three out of that, those six are actually where I put it in there for the schools. It would be to add a second unit to the second floor of the elementary school, because I feel that is a long way to go from the second floor down to outside of the cafeteria gym to be able to get one. I already have a spare case to be able to mount it to the wall to at least go into that, into the elementary school. So that was part of the plan. And then the other two were to add on to the ones that are at Smith Academy. I agree with having cases, the only problem is that because these are pieces of electronic equipment, you have to be concerned about the temperature control. So if they're out there for the soccer season, field hockey season, I think you are okay. But they cannot live out there because it will degrade the product itself. And then my only other concern would be is the security of them.
Yeah.
The, the case is weatherproof, that's not necessarily the issue. It's, if it's accessible all the time, you have to have a way to make sure that people aren't going in there and ultimately walking away with it or having an issue with it. They do make the boxes with alarms on them, but now you're talking wiring, who does it alarm to? There would be a few extra dollars in the grand scheme of things, but I do think it's a good idea. I'm, I'm a big proponent of having more AEDs, and that's why I wanted to put this in as, you know, a little bit for my own department, the police department, but also to add to the school department, because I feel that in a few areas, the school should have some extras. And only because I was involved personally with a student in my earlier career here, they should be everywhere.
Yeah. And without getting too in the weeds on this, it, it seems, though, like having the coaches bring them out there, I, I know that that might seem like kind of a pain for the coaches, but it, to me, it accomplishes two things. It's right at the field all the time, and it's secured when it's not out there. So I kind of think the, the setup that's working that we have now is probably the best in terms of making sure those AEDs aren't vandalized or stolen or, you know, whatever, but...
So this ultimately is, would add one more to the athletics. We had, when we got our LifePak 15 for the paramedic-level ambulance in 2017, part of that project was also getting some of these CR, they were different, CR Plus, they've just changed the, the name a little bit. At that time, Chief Gahn got additional ones for the school, and they have three of that version that are supplementary to the school, but then also specifically for athletics. But we know at times, we can have multiple teams playing at Smith Academy. So now by adding these, this would give the ability for every field, they each have their own. There's not even a matter of boy soccer to girl soccer to field hockey. Every coach would be able to have their own. If we, if we choose to mount them somewhere, that's certainly something we can look into. But this will still get them, so every team will have one.
Okay. Maybe they could even be mounted inside, like the field hockey field has that little shed, so it's locked up at night.
Yeah, when not in use, that would, that would actually probably almost be a perfect, for a perfect place. And I believe there's a, a lock shed near the softball field.
Yep.
Yeah.
So indoors, absolutely. Let's put a case up and have them in there during the season at least.
Okay.
Just take them out when the weather's cold, just so they don't cause problems.
So could, so you feel like...
Are these on the capital plan?
They are not.
They probably don't, do they rise to the level of capital?
Well, the total is 19,000, so yes, it'd be over the 10,000, so we have to get that on the plan.
Okay, so what you're, what, what David was asking for, you think you could accomplish with this number that's here?
Yes.
Okay.
These, these are, unless the price has gone up in the last 40 days or so, these were the most recent prices for each of these items.
Okay, but this is, and I mean, in, in terms of the count, they're in the count of life packs you're getting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay, so can we move on? Is everybody all set with those? Is there any more questions or anything about the life packs?
How come they're not on the master plan and wouldn't we want to put them on? And not the master plan, the capital plan, sorry.
These were projects that ultimately came up due to the ARPA funds becoming available. They were not part of a capital plan that got submitted last year.
Right.
So you could, you could put a, a sheet together and submit it with your capital stuff for this year.
Sure.
And we'll get it on the plan.
Yeah.
I mean, not everything we spend ARPA funds on has to be on the capital plan.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I guess I'm a little bit confused, is that are we only taking projects that are also a capital?
No, they shouldn't be.
So that's why I'm, this was kind of a COVID thing, it's obviously, it's a healthcare, which is really what
Right.
kind of we're leading towards.
Right.
So that's ultimately why the project came up, so...
I don't want to speak for the finance committee, but I think the goal is probably if the funds would go towards something that is already on capital planning, we should look at that.
Right.
But it was, it was, being on a capital plan was not a prerequisite for the board of selectmen to make decisions on the ARPA funding.
That's how I feel as well.
This was not capital, this, this came up because of...
Oh, understood.
You know, and on any of those capital submissions under the plan, you have to put the source of funding, so this is perfect. You just put that in.
Right, right.
Right, you could put it on, right.
Something that came available as the chief said.
If we need another tracking mechanism, for sure.
Yep, I could do it.
Good, Daryl? Okay, I'll take that as a yes. So can we move down to highway message boards to support COVID alerts? Because we did have a number of questions about that.
Sure.
When you weren't there. Mine was, after some recent developments, I have concerns about who would be controlling that information and deciding what goes on there. So that was my first question, but other people had, had other questions as well.
Sure. So my, my thought would be is that this would be something that, you know, the information is ultimately coming from Board of Health, because they're the ones that are supposed to be overseeing specifically the COVID and any other health issues. So the information would come directly from them, and it would typically be overseen by me of what's, how it actually gets in there. I'm well-versed in these signs, I know how they work. Every time we've brought a sign into sound, sign into town for the last four years, I'm the ones that sets them up, does the programming, and the whole nine yards.
I mean, I guess I'm just, like, I, I just don't know what the COVID message would be, like, what...
You could do it if you're, if you're gonna run a vaccine clinic, if you're gonna be doing testing for any reason. If you want to put up, you know, again, there's, not everybody is on social media, not everybody gets code red, so you could have this be that it, your cases go up there. This was completely an, an add-on, only because another community did get this, did get highway message boards and cones. So it was just another project to kind of put out there, gives us another way to alert the residents of things that are happening. You know, perfect example, last couple of days, there's a lot of extra cars hanging around at the elementary school. You could put that in there, why is the National Guard in town? So it, it has its benefits, it's not a be-all, end-all, but that's all it was, is just giving us another way to let the residents know what's going on in town.
It seems really expensive, Bob. $38,000? I, that, that's the thing, well, that's one of the things, and then how many of them? And then where would you put them? We have multiple entries into town, so you're talking two or three or four?
Well, it's, it's listed here at two, they are, I, I know this, I heard this question from a few weeks ago. These sign boards are not cheap. I mean, they are $17,000 plus each. That, that's the going price for them, and it has been for a number of years. I got prices for these, and they've actually only gone up about $1,000 in the last five years. They're just, it, it's not cheap equipment, there's a lot of electronics, there's about a dozen batteries in most of them. It just, they come with a price. As far as locations, I think that's above the scope of what we need to decide tonight, honestly. It's, we could put them in different locations, they can get moved. But again, it was just a project that another department, another community in Hampshire County did get them, and that was the number that I used.
I mean, obviously, I can see where there'd be a number of other useful ways to use the message boards, but we would be putting them in as these COVID things so that they qualify for the ARPA funding.
Yep, and it, again, the messaging is, it's kind of clear that you are, you're giving out the case count, you're giving when you have clinics, or any of those other information that you need to get out to the residents that ultimately don't necessarily are on the town website, Facebook, or even the, get the code red messages, so. It was just another, another way to disseminate information within the town. And you, you could justify that you're notifying people about COVID. And then, yes, it has its advantages throughout the rest of the year.
So what do we do now, my other question is, when we need message boards now, what do we do? How do we get them? Because we have, had them in town.
So we have the ability as emergency services to borrow them from Western Mass Homeland Security. They typically don't want you borrowing them for more than about a week to 10 days at a time. And if you want them longer, you really have to have a special request, because they are available to the entire western part of the state.
Okay. So I know you, we, I, I know they've come in for like luminaryum, like alerting people... So I know you, we, I know they've come in for like luminaryum, like alerting people to that sort of thing and.
Those are actually from Franklin County sheriffs are the host for those particular signs.
And do we pay for those when they come in? So we at this point do have the availability to bring sideboard signboards in at no cost currently.
Short term, yes.
Short term.
Yes.
Okay. Just I think that's an important piece of information. Anybody have additional questions or comments about the message boards? One question you didn't answer that Daryl had that was a good one was where would you be placing regardless of what the message might be? Because there's a number of ways to get into town. So you have two down. I mean, I guess they could be moved depending on what the message is, right?
I don't know. I guess in a way that seems to be above the scope of what we're looking unless we want to try to add a third or a fourth unit. And then it's adding more cost.
Yeah.
Typically, we bring in two signs and that's all we would get if we were to borrow them from the sheriffs as well. So we don't, we don't gain anything extra by trying to borrow them either.
Well, we're also talking things that are going to be a high priority and things that will be a lower priority on this list because we have to narrow it down.
So yes, I would put this at a lower priority, honestly. It was just something that was out there, was brought to my attention from another community. I wouldn't put it as a high priority.
Okay.
For sure.
And obviously, if we had some of our own, we could also put them out more quickly in an emergency situation than if we had to borrow them. So I can see the merits of having some, but it is an expensive endeavor.
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody all set with the message boards?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Can you, we move on to the air filtration system for fire apparatus.
So these are some some systems that I had some, excuse me, some paperwork on and I can't remember the name off the top of my head at the moment, but they are specific. They're they're air purifying system. And obviously, everybody that knows kind of what we do, we get in the truck, we have a lot of other carcinogens on us, but these particular units also were very specific with carbon filters and filtration specific to virus load. So it would fit within COVID. In the fire truck, we do sit relatively close together. We don't really have a choice. It's difficult because of the job that we do to be having masks on when we're then trying to put our SCBA on and we're trying to hear and listen to the radios and so forth. So it's just another one of those. It is a way to help filter now as we are going to or coming back from incidents.
So those are cabin filters?
Yes, there's actually it's a cabin filter that, but it's a it's its own standalone unit.
Okay. And, okay. Anybody have any questions about those?
Big sense.
Yeah, it's a it's a small dollar figure too for probably a high impact. Isolation gowns and cleaning wipes is kind of self explanatory, but did you want to speak to it?
You know, obviously, it doesn't appear that in general COVID's going away anytime soon. We're we're we are still responsible for going to calls with, you know, either known or suspected COVID positive. We don't have the ability to say no.
Right.
And these are things that are put out there that we are supposed to be using to protect ourselves. So the isolation gowns, I mean, we wear gloves all the time, obviously, and but the cleaning wipes, we've gone through more in the last two years than I probably have in my entire career, just because we are, it's that constant cleaning, there's more materials to clean. And, you know, it's just one of those things that we go through the product. It certainly is something specific to COVID. Obviously, it's for every ambulance call that we do, but.
Okay. Is $1,000 enough or is that, but you could also revisit that, say, two years out or three years out to restock that at such a small dollar amount?
Yeah, actually, I just got a notification last week and I put this project in back at the beginning. There's another 12% increase on gloves. I mean, I used to be able to buy a hundred box of gloves, was about $9. They are now $24.
Right.
Is the new going rate within the, I think it's December 1st that it kicks in. So it's the prices have definitely increased. So it could be that we might need a little bit more. We're doing more calls in general that require gloves. So.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's small money, big impact again. So anybody have any questions on that? So the one that a lot of people had questions on was the compensate the essential employees.
Sure. So this this came about, I get, you know, tons of different news articles, periodicals, and it's been in the news all over the country. There are municipalities, counties, states that are all putting out this premium pay for essential workers. So that's kind of where I took it from. I've probably gotten two or three dozen specific to that come to me via, you know, Firehouse, Fire Rescue, some of the magazines that I get. And it, the whole premise behind it, and they're doing it across the board, is you are trying to show the people that continue to respond, we're pretty much in the thick of COVID response, a little extra is the way that they're kind of doing it. And that's the way that the federal government's looking at it. The the number that I use was the 2,000. That seems to be what I've, in most of the articles that I'm reading, that's about the average. I've seen upwards of 5,000 per employee and I've seen as little as 500. It depends on the organization and the size that was doing it. So this was a a way to to show a little bit of appreciation for those people that had to keep working, they didn't have the opportunity to change their work schedule, work remote or anything else, and were required because of their jobs to continue to kind of put their their health on the line for the last, you know, year and a half plus.
I know there was, I don't remember who it was said they had questions about this.
I think finance, just that when we talked about it prior, we just wanted to see what specific criteria would be used to determine who the 50 people are? Or is that maybe that's a rough, a rough number or whatever? I'm not saying it's 50 people, but just what what selection criteria would we propose using for something like this?
So that was a rough number. After speaking with Marlene, we were, we were not exactly sure because I honestly, I don't have that figure of who whose work schedule didn't change. But in my letter that was submitted with this request, I think I had three criteria in there that your work schedule didn't alter at all over the last, you know, 20 months. You weren't working remotely at any time during that period, or if you were, it would be at a prorated amount. And there was one more, one more criteria, and I don't have that paper off the top of my head right now because obviously it ran out.
So that's got to be outside of just your emergency responders?
Yes, that was, that was the crux. Obviously, you know, fire police and ambulance are kind of a, they're all inclusive because we didn't have the opportunity. But I know that, you know, there are, I believe there are a couple of DPW workers that they don't, you know, they had to keep coming to work. There's town hall staff that had to keep coming to work to keep the town functioning no matter what. So they they were here and we opened the building back up only after about three months or so, maybe four months to start bringing people in. So there was the opportunity or the chance that you could have come in contact with a COVID positive patient regardless of working in town hall or in other other locations in town. So it was kind of that if you, I guess I use it as if you didn't alter your work schedule for the last 20 months, you should be considered for it. And then if the select board chooses, they could also prorate it that you did come to work, but you worked remotely for three months. Well, maybe you don't get the full $2,000. Maybe you get $1,500, but that would be up to you, your discretion if we wanted to go that route. So it was a, the 50, it might be a high estimation of number of employees that would even be eligible. Because you could, you could take it down to just essential workers or emergency personnel if you wanted, and then it's fire, police, ambulance.
Right.
And then you kind of take away some of the other who did, who didn't work, whatever the case may be, if that's, if that's the choice of the select board.
Okay, it sounds like somebody was asking something.
Can I ask a quick question? It would be helpful to see the criteria because listening, it sounds like we would have some school staff that would qualify by those criteria as well.
Yes, when I kind of looked at all town departments, you know, rough guess, just from knowing what people kind of worked for the last year, you know, the the two principals, the office staff, the custodians, I believe even possibly the the school nurses, because I think they were doing some work over the summer, especially because of having students in the building over the course of the summer for.
They were included. I think what he's saying is they were included in that number.
Those folks would be part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, it just feels like this is something that we'll need to take a little time with if we're going to move forward with anything like this to sort of carefully craft what the requirements are, not necessarily because you're aiming at a certain number of people or not people or whoever, but just so that you're very clear about what the definitions of all these things are. Because we're, you know, we're dealing with some people who are in bargaining units here and, you know.
Right, I mean, we had, right, some DPW employees were working these not working weeks and that sort of thing. That should not qualify. They, that would be, and then you had, you know, you had some folks at the DPW, like he said, had to come in no matter what, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think this is something I would want to think about.
So I did have it in my letter. I don't believe it may have gotten to all of you. So basically, if you did not miss time from work over the last 18 months and to those whose jobs and daily routines were not drastically changed, payment would not be awarded to those that missed time from regular duty or those working remotely. So I I kind of gave the criteria of what it was. I just couldn't remember what I wrote because again, it was formal.
But I mean, even with the town hall employees, so they were able to work remotely. Then we had, you know, different stages of, they had the barriers. There was, you know, no, only one person in the office at a time. Like there was a lot of things, provisions made to keep them as safe as possible. Yeah. So this would require, I think, a lot of thought and I, I, I'm not sure where I sit on this. I, I need to think about this.
It's a lot. It was kind of a, it's clearly out there. It clearly fits into the category. It's not even a question of if it actually qualifies for it or not. And I guess I wrote it as this was a little thank you for continuing to work for the last year and a half.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the the emergency service personnel, it's, you know, it, the, I get where you're coming from. I think in terms of other things, it just requires some some thought. That's just my opinion. I don't know if people, other people want to weigh in.
So I have a question and maybe Christie can kind of clarify this, but I know when during the COVID thing, when the school was needing to hire staff, they could not use some of the COVID money for that purpose. And so now all of a sudden, we can use this for, you know, for for personnel that are working. So I don't know if Christie, you can clarify that or I don't quite understand why all of a sudden this pot of money could then be used for for COVID related when the other stuff could.
I don't understand.
When you, when you're referring to this pot of money, can you just clarify so that I'm making sure I answer you accurately?
This pot of money, what we're talking about tonight versus the money that was received, you know, prior to this or COVID related expenses.
So I guess if you're looking at the the $9,700 that that's been out of pocket, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Okay, so that qualifies under our, what we can spend some of our S R funds on. I don't think that's a question. It's just a matter of prioritization of those funds that they have, they needed to cover a lot of things. And I think we were looking for if there was somewhere that could help. And I think part of it has been the communication of understanding what this list needed to include. And so I, that's where I think this particular shortlist of $9,700 of very COVID related items came onto the list. It wasn't that our other funds might not be able to cover it. It was just the need for those other funds in a lot of other areas that this, that ARPA funds wouldn't be available for instructional purposes, for example. Did that answer, did that hit what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's it's close, but.
So Daryl, that question was outside of the discussion of this essential employee thing? Because I got confused when you started asking that.
What, what did, what was your question, Diana?
Well, we were in this discussion about this essential employee pay. And then when you asked that question, was that in regards to essential employee pay or just all things?
All. Question I had, you know, I know this is regarding essential employee pay, but last year there were, you know, it's my underst, you know, of some of the challenges last year and how other COVID money had been spent, that's all. So, you know, and we just have to be a little bit careful. We want to make sure if we were ever to do this, we'd have to have pretty clear criteria going forward as to who would qualify and who wouldn't. Because certainly some people in other departments besides emergency service may very well have qualified for this. And even for emergency services, I'm sure Bob's looking at, you know, people that were able to respond constantly and maybe he had some folks that were not able to, right?
Well, that was another one of my questions. Just if you went on a few calls over the last 18 months, that's much different than the people that are relying on constantly.
And I'm sure this, to me, this is the type of thing where you would probably have to get a group to sit down and really write something up because, you know, you could have a lot of people all of a sudden coming and saying, hey, look, I did X, Y, and Z, and I should get this money too. And I think you also run the risk of people.
That's why I'm.
Would be disqualified based on things that maybe were out of their control. So town hall was closed for a period of time. What about people who stayed home because their workplace wasn't open? How are they gonna, you know, so I just think there's a lot to consider in terms of that stuff, like what, so.
That's why I'm not saying much about any of this because I'm not sure how I feel about it. I mean, there's no question, we're grateful to all of the employees and particularly those that are on the emergency services side. I'm just a little unsure about this and how this would actually play out among employees and departments.
And townspeople.
And townspeople.
I think the the impact that this money has, we need to be thinking about the impact it has on the most people in town.
Exactly.
Not the fewest people in town. And I thankful, thankful for all those people who work every single day and do that kind of stuff. But this is a slippery slope that's going to, you're going to cause a lot of turmoil if you do, if you go down this, this.
It's entirely possible.
Bob, it's a great idea and I know that a lot of bigger cities and towns and their unions have negotiated this with, you know, I know the city of Springfield firefighters were about to go on strike because they weren't going to get their COVID money. And but it's.
It's, it's, it's a tough one. It requires a lot more thought, at least my personal thought on it. Any, anything else before we get to the last item on Bob's list? Okay, so Bob, you have one more item there.
Ultimately, you know, people were not calling the ambulance as much, so we had less calls, which requires less or means less revenue for the ambulance, makes it harder to operate. We're fully self supporting. We only make our budget based off of the ambulance calls that we respond to and we are able to transport. And the, it's about 11,800, I think, was the actual number, if I do out the math 100% of what we lost.
I thought you said there were more ambulance calls in a previous part of this discussion. Oh, okay.
This year. This, this, because you had to take it from pre-COVID. You're talking 20, 2019 to 2020 because we haven't finished this fiscal year.
Less calls.
Now we're back up.
Right, so now 2021, we are now.
I see, okay.
On the rise.
So you're talking about a previous year.
But you had to take whatever your previous full year prior to the COVID declaration, which is essentially was February or March of 2020. So you had to take one full year and then your actual COVID year.
Okay.
I just have a question on your chart.[1796.73]
I'm just trying to understand it. You have commitment, credits, adjustments. Is commitments, the bills that went out?
That.
Is credits, how much money you took in? And then is this like carried over? Because I know this and this doesn't equal that. Is it, is this a number that's carried over from previous year? Because you have, what I'm asking is you have 24,000 that you billed, more or less. You took in 13,000, but then the adjustment says 39,000, so.
The next column should be the total of those three across. So probably reduces, the adjustments reduce.
The adjustments are what ultimately, I mean, and Lori can speak to this, is you look at the columns further to the right, you know, we've typically billed out 260 to 280,000 dollars in a year, but because of Medicare, Mass Health, no insurance, we don't get to collect. So that's where you're going to see the change in the number. And the month to month doesn't necessarily mean anything that you billed out 24,000 in July and you collected 13, because the collections could have been from the previous month. It's all a matter of when the bills are go out. They don't necessarily coincide.
So this column, the adjustments is what's lost?
That's essentially, that is the loss for that month.
Okay.
Yes.
So, but regardless of any of those numbers, before you came, Lori was explaining about the lost revenue calculation.
We have to do it as a total calculation for the town. And then if we qualify, then you can ask for that money.
Sure, and I, I got that guidance after I submitted this.
Yeah, so it has to be, because I think the base year is fiscal year, but then all the subsequent years, the calendar year. So they make it real confusing. But I'm going to do the calculation to see where we're at.
Typical federal government.
I'll let you know if we qualify.
Okay, so that's.
To me, it's.
It'll be determined by, outside the, the discussion here, just, okay. So that's the whole list we've gone through, and everybody's had a chance to speak to everything. I think, I guess my feeling was that this was a starting point. I was hoping we could make the, the determination about the fuel tanks, but if you think that there needs to be a little bit more investigation into that first, then maybe we can't even do, do that one this evening. I do want to explain Brian had to just excuse himself from the meeting, so he has left for, for folks who are, are joining us online. Does anyone want to take, are there any that anyone wants to take action on tonight? Or do we want to just have this as a starting point?
I personally think this is a great starting point, and I'd like to digest some of this information and, you know, unless there's something absolutely critical that somebody thinks that we should, could say yes, keep that, yes to. And I guess that's another question. I assume these funds are spent at the discretion of the Board of Selectment. Is that?
Yes.
Because generally, big ticket items, we go to town meeting. We're obviously not going to town meetings, so, but this, this is, the Selectmen ultimately will make this decision. Is that correct, Marlene?
Yes, that is my understanding.
I think I would be comfortable if we were making our decisions with, with finance committees, recommendations or not recommendations ultimately.
Oh, yeah.
You know, in other words, that, that matters to me. You know, it's going to be a team, team thing.
The only thing I would suggest is we have already had conversations about the coordinator being paid out of this, but we haven't actually had a vote from you guys to say, kind of, it might even be a bigger conversation because the Board of Health feels they should get money back for some of the money they spent on her, on that position. So we, we're using it, but we didn't really make a vote to, to use that money. So from our perspective, it was one of those things that we needed to, housekeeping do, is that, you know, say that we're going to, to use that money for that. And, and a bigger conversation is, you know, are you, for the weeks prior to August, when we kind of drew a line in the sand, I, I think you've been approached by the Board of Health already that they feel they should get some of their salary money back. So just putting it on the radar for you.
Hey, right now, as far as this money, is it in our town funds or?
Half of the money is in the bank.
Oh, half the money is his.
Yeah.
So down the road, we can actually make a decision on some of these items.
Exactly.
But I do like what Diane's saying, a team concept, everybody together, try to prioritize the most important ones and.
Most impactful?
Yes.
This is a, this is, this is not something that's ever going to happen again. And it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity we need to seize and do the most good for this community as a whole, is how I feel about the decisions that we need to make. And, you know, and some of them are, some of these are small items and they're easy, you know, the, the money for melanin, and this is, that's just an easy one. It's a, it's a small amount of money. Things like the, you know, the, the.
Gowns.
The gowns and everything for the, and the broadband and that, that sort of thing. Those are small. We could probably, I'm not saying we need to do it tonight, but maybe we could prioritize those maybe over the next couple of months and, and get those off of the list and, and then focus on, on some of the ones that require some more thought and.
Actually, I'd like to see a spreadsheet with, you know, prioritize, lower priority, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Or each department saying, these, these are my priorities. Here is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or something that we can actually look at.
I'm assuming based on Christie's comments that we are also going to see some additions to this list from the school department.
Right. Does it make sense? Is it too long to say, can we reconvene this group like your first meeting in January? Is that too long?
I don't think so. I mean, I think that's fine. That, that would give the time to get information from the school if in fact they're going to submit some different things. And, and I was looking for additional info from Christie because I, I think that matters. There's been a lot of money that's flowed into the school department already. And that's something we really need to take into consideration when we're making these decisions, given that there's other departments here that have no other source for funding these things. So that's, that's a piece of information we need. And so there's some, some pieces of information we need and.
Well, January will be starting already in budget talks, so, yeah, that'd be perfect.
It is true. It is true. Those are going to be some long meetings.
So just one thing, speaking of budgets, I did include in your pack.
I just picked it up.
Yes.
So Marlene was offering us a nice segue here into the fact that we have in front of us the, the sparks that light those budget talks. The FY '23 budget schedule is here in draft form, as well as the letter requesting budget submissions and town meeting article submissions from all departments. So that ball will get rolling.
In capital, capital, or due by December 1st.
Is that when we're meeting?
No.
Oh, okay.
The, but capital requests should be submitted to Marlene by December 1st.
That is not in here, right? Oh, yeah, it does have.
Yes, it is.
Communication was sent out.
Well, it was sent out separately, yes.
Okay, yep. So we're, well, feels like it just ended, but we'll start it again. That's how this works. So this is information that will be going out to board shortly. You don't need any kind of.
I'd like to send that out tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it looks fine to me. I don't know, Ed, do you want to? This is fine in its draft form?
Yes, this is fine in its draft form, yes.
So the first, first meeting, your first Tuesday or whatever day you meet in January, do we want to reconvene then?
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
And hopefully.
More information and, and to Sharon's point about the COVID coordinator, you know, that, 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 me personally, probably it makes sense to do that, but I don't think it does any harm to wait until January and do it at that point.
No, but it would make sense also to do a discussion about the funding of it going forward, from whatever point we're at, because.
So I know the Board of Health has had a discussion about that, but I haven't received anything from them in writing.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. So there's some pieces that we could spend the next month and a half gathering, and then we all have time to think about these, these bigger items that have been put before us, and we can get down to business.
I'd love to create a form that, you know, that has the expense category and like all the guidelines that ARPA is requiring us.
Okay.
That everybody needs to fill out, and then it can officially come to you guys and be approved.
Okay.
So then, because we have to report it by projects.
Okay.
So it's important to start organization immediately.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that I can get that done, you know, in draft form within a week or so, get it out to you guys. We can, you know, play around with it and tweak it as we need to, but at least it has the basic information that we will always need and can pull that later to say, this is the project, this is why we did it, this is who approved it, you know, everything's.
And, and I would, I would hope that the department head would need to identify what, how they think it meets the criteria. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Unrelated, but related, we're having our audit on November, what is today?
16th.
16th, so I just want to give Lori a shout out because we've been working super hard to get that. So look at that, we're actually having an audit in November.
That's awesome.
Both of you, Lori, we, we thank you profusely often at our meetings. I'm sure you never hear it.
But she's actually here, so I was like.
Oh, we do, and so it, it is nice to thank you in person because it's really wonderful.
We hope to have recast.
Lori, Marlene, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay.
On, on, on the fuel tank thing, do you think by our January meeting, you guys would be able to get some more information?
Absolutely.
As to whether we think that one will be doable or not, you know, and then at least we, we can be, and at that meeting, we can start talking about alternatives to make sure that, you know, because we're obviously going forward with that project, and we got to pay for it one way or another. And if this isn't the way to pay for it, then we're going to, we'll, we'll have to explore some of the other options we talked about at our finance committee.
Yeah, of course, that's very reasonable, Darryl.
Karen, can I ask, it says that there's five items in the chat. Are they anything we need to know about? I, I thought we usually turn the chat off during these.
Christie was looking for a copy of the form.
Okay, I see what it is.
I told her I was going to email it to her tomorrow. She said, fine, good night. We get a red. We'll show her very love, too.
Sean said, Christie said, good night, and then Sean said he.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure there was something. But we, I, I'm a, I prefer chat being shut off because we're trying to keep a public record here, and when you have things in the chat, that kind of.
Oh, before we leave, I want to say thank you for everybody being here.
John.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, because I don't think we're meeting before Thanksgiving. So to you and your families, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Aren't we, we're not, we don't have a meeting next week?
And to all of you, happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, not next week. Okay, that's, that's fine with me. Yes, happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, no, I know that. For some reason, I thought I saw something on next week. I'm okay with that. Okay, everybody good? John, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, oh.
I was going to say, Karen, say something to me about, oh, the fire chief had wanted to address the Select Board earlier in the meeting on the agenda about the future of the fire department.
Oh, yes.
Do you want to pick that up or?
We could put that at another meeting.
Yeah, because it'd be nice if all three of us were here and Brian didn't have.
I prefer all three and honestly.
I know, when we're a little fresher, maybe.
My day started a little early today, so.
Yeah.
I haven't been home yet.
We could put them on a, a, a December meeting.
The next meeting is December, well, we're, we're looking at having a meeting on November 30th with residents on West Street. But the next regular meeting of the Select Board is December 7th.
Okay, so maybe we could.
That sounds.
You're, you're all done with the finance committee?
Yes, indeed. We have a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yay, good night.
Thank you.